Okay, so it's 5:30. We'll open the meeting. Just to point out that the selectmen's meeting will be recorded by Area 58. First item on our agenda is an executive session. And I will make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to General Laws 38, Section 21, to discuss a town, Assistant Town Accountant insofar as to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel. And also, Morris Brothers, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And I do declare that those discussions in public session would hurt our ability to manage the case.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have any discussion? Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. We'll go into recess and come right back up. Public session. If you would join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
All right, let's see. So, first thing on our agenda, well, we have a 6 o'clock appointment with the zoning bylaw committee update. So Frank's, somebody here? Frank's here? Oh, Jerry's here. Okay, good. So, I can, I just want to just make it clear what we're doing. Almost a year ago, the selectmen appointed or revised, reinstated the zoning bylaw review committee with a charge to review the zoning bylaw, taking into account all kinds of, all of the issues, but including the potential for the MBTA zoning issue that we do need to address by the end of the year. We were supposed to have a recommendation by February for May's town meeting, and frankly, the job was just too big to get that done. I want to compliment the committee, though. They have worked very hard on this, including the building commissioner and the town administrator, to go through the entire bylaw and make various recommendations and so on. We're not entirely done yet. We have, probably at our next meeting, which I think is in August, we'll be able to finalize a recommended zoning change for, or zoning bylaw change for the MBTA issue. I think that's the only thing we're, that we're not done yet, right?
Yeah, we have to make a small, a few small adjustments.
Right, and there's a few, there were a few things. The board has a, an executive summary. And it's, again, this is, this was a big, very big job. Again, I need to compliment the committee, including the building inspector and town council and everybody, did a fantastic job. It's hard for me to summarize it, other than to say in kind of like very bold or very general that we did some reorganization in terms of consolidating some definitions and so on. We did some organization in terms of the way things were outlined alphabetically. In certain places, we had the various changes made to which committees going to handle it. Again, it's a very detailed thing. The board has the redline copy of the zoning bylaw. Our hope is that by our next meeting, not this board's meeting, but the next zoning committee's meeting, that we'll also have finalized as a recommendation for the MBTA part of it, we'll then ask this board to adopt the zoning changes and get the process moving. So in order for us to move this process ahead, we need to get it, zoning before the planning board, and we're just about ready to do that, so that they can hold their hearings and everything. It's our expectation that we'll have a special town meeting in the spring, I mean, in the, before the end of the year, and this will be part of that. So, I don't know if anybody on the board has any comments or questions. It's, again, it's a kind of a detailed change. We went through every single part of this bylaw.
John, is there any sort of chance of, I don't want to say a presentation, but...
Yes.
You know, that we can kind of go over it with the public and explain rationale or anything like that? How much, how deep are we going to get into this?
We're gonna have, we will, we will do that. We do have to have a presentation. We want to present the whole thing at once. I know the hot issues in it are...
MBTA.
The MBTA part of it, so that'll be a big focus. And again, that bylaw is just about done. We're using a model bylaw, and we have had it, as you know. We had it sent to the state authority, and they sent back some recommended changes, which we're either implementing or trying to explain. Outside of that, we should be done by the next meeting. So then after that, once this board accepts it, because this is just a subcommittee of this board, then we move ahead with presentations and so on.
We also have been working with Old Colony Planning Council, Representative Lonatra, and Senator Brady. So, next steps John mentioned would be a zoning bylaw review committee meets first week of August, I believe it is. Have the final edits back to this board on August, your August 13th meeting, for your kind of formal blessing on it. And then work with the planning board to have meetings with them, public hearings as required to get on the town meeting warrant. And then we're also working with Old Colony Planning Council and Representative Lonatra and Senator Brady to do a public forum. So, you know, the impact, their involvement isn't necessarily with the local zoning stuff, but the MBTA zoning in particular, because this is something that's coming down from the state. So, they've, they've taken on a hands-on approach here in Halifax as well, so we will have them available, so residents can, you know, ask questions of them.
Good.
And how this came to be. And then we also will look to do one or two more public workshops where we'll do, you know, maybe an overview presentation to the public, just to try the, a lot of, a lot of changes in here, and most of them are just cleaning things up, but there are some changes of substance. So we want to make sure everyone understands that and get the information out, education out to everyone as much as in advance of town meeting as we can. So that's, that's the plan going forward.
Great. So, it's taken us about a year, but we've, I think we've made a lot of progress. And, you know, we want to make sure that this can be, because it is such a big, it'll be a big, a big change, only because it's so big itself, the zoning bylaw, that we have to have all those public hearings. Okay. So everybody knows what's going on.
John, could you have the meeting minutes posted online?
Yeah, we're working on that. That should be done by then.
The what?
The meeting minutes.
For the zoning bylaw review committee. Oh, sure.
And the executive summary that you guys have?
Uh, yeah, I don't see why not. It's just, again, it just identifies by section changes. So, without, without looking at the bylaw, you can't understand what it's talking about. Okay, any other comments, questions? That's really just a, unless Jerry or Frank were both on the committee, have anything to add?
No, I think you've explained it very well.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, it's, it's a, it was a big job, a very big job, but this committee's just outstanding. Good. Outstanding. Okay, I got almost 6:15. We got one more. We got one minute or so. You want to do some of these warrants? Something?
Yeah.
There you go.
I move to affirm approval of the following commitments and warrants. Payroll warrant number 126 for $20,647.54. School warrant number 127 for $1,209,272.56. Vendor warrant number 128 for $301,292.25. Payroll warrant number 4 for $287,588.82. Vendor warrant number 5 for $2,546,713.31. A withholding warrant number 6 for $103,366.9. Ambulance commitments July 1, 2024 through July 7, 2024 for $35,441.90. Ambulance commitments 7/8/2024 through 7/14/2024 for $47,568.20.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous?
I move to approve of the following warrant. Vendor warrant number 7 for $177,119.37.
Second. Any discussion? All those opposed in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, I think it's about 6:15. So we have an appointment with the library trustees, who's here? And you want us to, because you had some resignations, you want us to appoint Tina Palmer and Holly Dillon, who are both here, as library trustees, right?
Yes.
They will have to run for election in May. All right, so this is an appointment from now until the election in May. All right, do you want to tell us what your interest are? What about it?
Oh, so I've been in Halifax for 15 years. When I was in college, I worked for six years for the Lethal Library, and then I went and got my business degree. So when the position opened up, I just felt like it was a good time to get into the community and help out at the library. I love the homes of libraries. That's why I was interested.
All right. Tina, you've been involved in a bunch of stuff.
Well, I've been involved in libraries since I was born, but I was a trustee. At age 10, I started volunteering at the library. At age 14, this gass had called me and said, on my birthday, and said, "You're 14, you can go get a waiver for it, so you get to work." The next day, I started at the library and worked there till I graduated from college. And then I went away for 10 years, came back, and brought my kids up here at the library.
Excellent. Okay, good.
That's two, two fantastic resumes right there.
Agreed. It's worthwhile work, and thank you for volunteering.
Yeah?
Yeah. The only thing is, you'll have to get signatures and write in the spring, but I imagine you'll have too much trouble with that, so...
Is that something you both want to do?
I think so.
I think so.
You guys will be in the lead.
Okay, great. Great. Well, welcome.
It's good. Okay, so I guess I'll do, I'll do one at a time, I suppose, just to make a record clear. So I'll move that we appoint Tina Palmer to an open seat on the Board of Library Trustees. Does it technically have an expiration date, Pam?
Yeah, it's on May 17, 2025.
All right, good. All right, okay, so do I have a second?
I second.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. I also move that we appoint Holly Dillon as a, to fill an open seat on the Board of Library Trustees with an expiration date of May 17, 2025. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Oh.
He's after a guy.
Yep.
So, there's, there's two seats open. One expires at a certain time. Are they being appointed to certain seats now, or they're just going to be appointed until May, and then in April, they decide which seats they're going to run for?
I think they have to, they'll have to draw papers for whichever seat they want.
But right now, they're just being appointed to the...
To fill out, just until May, right.
Yeah.
But in, in May, I don't know which one is longer than the other one, but that's up to you guys, whatever you want. You'll both apply for the same one, I suppose, but I don't think that's a good idea.
I think so.
But that's great, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
I have a quick question. So, if we've been sworn in to another committee, do we still...
Yep, I'm going to have them sign the card, and then I'll contact the guests tomorrow. I'll bring down the ceiling and get them sworn in.
So you can't vote until you see the clerk and get sworn in?
Yeah.
But you can still go to meetings, of course. Okay, very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
For the library trustees and everyone for coming and all that.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we still have a few more minutes.
Eva's not here yet anyways. Eva's not here yet for the 6:30.
Our 6:30 is not here yet.
All right, yeah, so, so, let's see. We have, we did all the warrants.
Can we skip over the minutes?
Skip over the minutes? Okay, so we'll skip over the minutes. Government Study Committee.
So this was, we've spoken about this a few times, and at the last meeting in June, the board had requested that I prepare a charge, a draft committee charge, for the Government Study Committee. So in your packets was a draft charge. This was based off of some research from other communities that have done similar studies, and also with the advice of counsel, included his email in the packet as well. And this is really just for a starting point of kicking off the conversation, and then whatever the board's pleasure is, we can make those amendments to the charge and go forward.
So, this was, I started this discussion myself. I think, as we can tell from the zoning bylaws and some of the other bylaws, I think that it's time for the town of Halifax to study itself and decide what direction it wants to head in. We've had, in the past, some discussion about expanding the Board of Selectmen, turning certain positions into appointed positions as opposed to elected positions. All of that, I think, should be done in the context of one study. We don't do things piecemeal.
Sure.
Make more conflicts than we already have. So that's why I recommend we do this. We did, Cody and I had a discussion with Paul Durensis, who's one of our legal counsel, who has vast experience in this particular type of governmental issue, like whether the change in form of government or anything like that. And he recommended, which I think is the way to do it, that the Board of Selectmen's Appointment Committee to do the study. And it'd be just like the zoning bylaw committee, it'll be a committee that will make a recommendation and then move ahead from, move ahead from there, one way or another. The only thing I would change in the, in the charge here would be to make all of the members, all of the six members, other than the one from the Board of Selectmen, appointed, not from a position, but just an appointed member. So in this charge, it says one representative from the Finance Committee. First of all, that's a bit of a problem, we think, because of the way the Finance Committee is not supposed to be on any committee.
Another committee.
So I don't, I don't think so. But I also think we, this is a huge job. I'm not going to try to downplay it at all. Whoever gets involved in this really has to be somebody who is in for a long call and willing to do an awful lot of work. So I would rather see that the three of us maybe come up with three people each or something like that, that we might think might be appropriate for something like this. I think the qualities I would look for would be someone with, with experience in town government already, but not a current official of any sort. And someone who is also very thoughtful in terms of how they go about things. I mean, I have some folks in my mind already that I've seen work in the past and do a wonderful job, and, and I'm not sure if they're interested, because I haven't talked to them about it, but I would, I would, I would do it that way. So, that would be my suggestion to it. I do think that the one member of the Board of Selectmen, it could be whoever's most interested in it, should be on that committee as the chairman for two reasons. One is because by making one of the members of the Board of Selectmen on that committee, we have, we have better access as a selectman to resources sometimes, you know, than somebody who, just a committee who will be getting together. And then the second thing is, I think by appointing a selectman as a chairman, it'll, it'll get the ball rolling and keep the ball rolling better than just trying to get people together and say, "Okay, now what do you want to do next?" This is just to keep the focus on it. My recommendations.
So you're suggesting one chair, Board of Selectmen, and four members at large to consist of the five-member voting party?
Yes.
Plus town council and town administrator as members of the committee non-voting capacity.
Yeah, and that's, that's more or less how the zoning bylaw committee has been working, and it's worked fantastic. Like you said, we have town council involved in helping us go through all detail. The committee itself makes its recommendations, and of course, Cody's basically our support for the whole thing, so...
And the idea, John, nobody currently in an office, just so that there's no, you know, view of any sort of impropriety or anything like that?
Exactly, because I think, I think all of the offices are going to be under consideration for the ultimate structure of the government, whatever that might be. And so I wouldn't want anyone to be compromised at all in that, in that. What I'd be looking for would be an objective, thoughtful future. Now, whether this board agrees with it, when they get to it, that's different, or whether it gets through town meeting, that's different also.
Sure, but at least take a crack at it.
Yeah. That's how, that's how I envision it.
Do we want to put this on the next meeting and let us try and think of some folks? Is that how we want to do it, or what do you think?
I would do it transparently and maybe post something online, saying we're accepting talent bank forms. I think you want to give everyone a fair shot, you know, at it.
Yep.
So if the board approves the charge, we can get something posted this week, have a deadline of the end of August, you know, give, give everyone a month to submit talent bank forms, and then we could have them in in a September meeting, have everyone in, and then, you know...
Would it be incumbent upon a receipt of a talent bank form to be on the committee for consideration, or could members not having submitted the form also be considered by the nominating committee?
I would say you'd likely want to follow a process and have everyone submit a form.
So absent a talent bank form, that...
Yes, just like we do with all of the boards and committees. That's how we've historically done it.
Keep it consistent.
If you're interested, you have to submit, you know, a form showing your interest. I mean, it's up to the board, but I would just say you wouldn't want to fault, you wouldn't want to be any different in this process than you are with all of your other boards.
So if you have somebody in mind that you think might be a good candidate, then talk to them and, and find if they're interested. And if they are interested, then going out of talent bank form is pretty easy. Just check off a box and put your name on it, it's not much to it.
Good.
So, all right, anything else you want to talk about?
No. The charge looks good.
So, now I would...
So I made the change.
Just made that one change.
Yep, so membership now says, "The Government Study Committee shall consist of seven members, five of which shall be voting members, one representative from the Board of Selectmen, four other members at large..."
Can we change that? The one Board of Selectmen who will be the chairman?
I have that wording afterwards.
Yeah.
Four other members at large appointed by the Board of Selectmen, town administrator and town council. The Board of Selectmen representatives shall serve as chair of the committee.
Okay, that's good. And we will put this on the meeting for September?
The first September meeting to consider talent bank forms. And we'll have, plan to have, anyone who submitted one, we'll plan to have them in for the board.
Okay.
Great.
What is the whole reason that you want to change, and what kind of things are you thinking about?
I don't necessarily want to change, I want to study it. So, right now, we have a form of government that's been in effect since 1734. And if you look at the bylaws, sometimes there's inconsistencies, some of the bylaws are way outdated, some of the positions maybe need to be rethought. I'm not sure if everyone that's currently elected should be elected, but I think that's what this committee should be looking at. Okay, let's see. It is not quite 6:30, so we can talk about Al Hinks as a special police officer?
Yes, so Officer Hinks served the town for many years as a police officer. He retired on July 14. We plan to have him move to recognize his service at your August 13 meeting. He was unavailable to attend tonight's meeting, but the chief shahs requested that he be appointed as a special officer, so if anything comes up to utilize him between now and then, he's able to do so.
Okay, I would move that we appoint Al Hinks as a special police officer.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, we still have time for the memorandum of agreement with the Assistant Town Accountant.
Yes, so this one is, as you all know, our town accountant retired June 30. We do have an accounting consultant who is assisting us, but that person is only in the office a couple of hours a week with that. Our Assistant Town Accountant has taken on a lot of the responsibility in the office as far as responding to department heads, to handling all payroll. So with that, I presented the board with a proposed memorandum of agreement for just a temporary increase in compensation while we're without a town accountant in the office, and it would automatically be repealed upon the hiring, or if anything changes, the board must repeal that.
Okay, any discussion from the board?
No, I think it makes a lot of sense.
I think also. Okay, so I would move that we approve the memorandum of agreement with Lindsay Martinelli as Assistant Town Accountant, as described.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, I know you're here for 6:30, so I'm trying to make sure I can get you right on schedule.
Go to the ARPA discussion. You can move on to the ARPA discussion for Silver Lake.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's a good idea.
So, the board had previously allocated $463,380 to fund Halifax's portion of air conditioning at Silver Lake. It was initially proposed to install air conditioning at both the high school and middle school. They have gone out to bid on that project, and that has come in over budget by $262,980, and that's actually only going to do half of the AC at the middle school. Simultaneously, there was another project, which was going to provide a rooftop unit, HVAC unit, on the high school cafeteria. Halifax's portion of that was $101,000, and that was funded through a town meeting article at the spring 2023 town meeting. And that has come in at a deficit. So what Silver Lake has requested is that we move some of the ARPA money that was initially approved to the other project for the rooftop unit. It's still within the HVAC, and we've already spoken to the county, and they have no concerns with it, but because technically you are moving it from one project to another, it does require the board's authorization. So the new figures would be the AC project for the middle school only would be $410,523.79, would be Halifax's portion. And then the new cost for the rooftop unit at the high school would be $152,956.21, of which $101,000 is previously appropriated to town meeting, and $52,956.21 would be that ARPA funding being transferred from the project that was already approved to this other project. So no, no net increase, it's just a change from one project to another, the whole HVAC, but because it was a very specific scope that the board approved initially, we wanted to bring it back to get the board's approval. Plinton has already approved the change, and Kingston, I believe, it's before the board tomorrow, or it must have been, might have been yesterday.
So tell me, it's 52, 85621.
Correct.
That will be transferred from what?
From the previously approved $463,000, $463,380 of ARPA funding that the board has already approved for Silver Lake.
Okay, but it was specific to a project, right?
Yeah, AC for the middle school and high school. They're now only doing half of the middle school with that project.
Okay, and this is going to be transferred to?
To a high school cafeteria rooftop unit, of which we already appropriated $101,000 at town meeting on our stabilization fund.
Okay, I just want to make sure the motion's correct. Okay, any discussion?
Can I just ask, Cody, why, is it just because of the rising costs from when we, when we did the bid to what we have now?
Um, you know, I...
Do we have the kind of insight on that?
I don't have the full answer. I really, I, they, they worked with their house doctor initially to get an estimate of what the project would cost. I don't, I don't know if there was a miscommunication of why, you know, initially it was, initially it was 1.5 million to do both schools, and now they're only able to do half of the middle school with that. And part of it's certainly rising costs, maybe some miscommunication.
It just seems like a crazy jump for 1.5 for both to now half of one school for 1.5.
And when do they anticipate doing the remaining half?
So they just, they just procured this, they did a proposal, and they just got the proposals in, but they can't sign a contract because technically they don't have the funding in place.
Doing.
So now they are waiting for us to, us and the other communities to...
Reallocate the funds.
...get that funding, and then be able to sign a contract. We have made it known to them that they need to have a contract in place by, like, the end of August, because this is money from the county ARPA funding. And if we do not have this committed by September 30, if we lose this, we don't want to lose any money, you know, from the county. So all the three of us communities have advised them that if we do not have something by the end of August, we'll plan to bring it back to each of our individual boards and recommend reallocation. You know, we have, we have other things that we could absolutely spend it on, so, but we're pretty confident. We've been assured by the school administration that they will get it.
Be able to do it. Okay.
So, again, this is a motion to transfer ARPA money.
Yep, this is a...
And previously designated to the air conditioning at the middle school?
And high school.
And high school? And now it would be transferred to cafeteria rooftop unit at the high school?
Yep, so $52,956.21 will be transferred.
I just wanted to make it clear, let me make sure our record is clear. All right, any other discussion?
Nope.
All right, so let me, let me make that motion, the transfer fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, twenty-one cents.
Nine fifty-six.
Nine fifty, oh, it says eight on this.
Email's eight fifty-six.
It says eight.
Eight fifty-six.
You tell me.
It is fifty-two thousand and fifty-six.
Eight or nine?
It's eight, sorry.
Eight, all right, so fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents to be transferred of ARPA money to be transferred from the air conditioning at the middle school and high school project to a air conditioning project on the, on the high school cafeteria rooftop.
High school or middle school?
Nope, it's the high school.
High school, okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, so we're on test, we're a little bit late, but we're here to see Eva.
So Eva.
Eva Chapman.
Has been interning for the town. She's been doing a phenomenal job. One of the things that we've identified is transparency with the community, trying to get as much information out there as possible. So among other things, Eva has put together a newsletter, monthly newsletter. We published it online, we have paper copies available, it was included in your packet and she has some other issues she's working on, so we wanted to bring her in, have her give an overview of what she's worked on and what she's kind of sees forthcoming.
Are you here, is she here just for the summer?
Uh, she's going to be here through, yeah, the next couple of months.
Next couple of months, oh, did you graduate from college, high school?
No, I'm still, I'm going into senior year.
To where?
Senior year.
She's going to be a rising senior.
Okay.
High school.
A rising senior. Okay, sure, tell us what you are going to do.
Um, so in the recent issue, I wrote like an interview with Sandy after she retired and I've been doing the book of the month with the library with Jean and I've just been trying to cover like some stories from different departments, so like if anyone has any input, if they want to like email me or something, like any story that they want to see, I'll be there. And then I have the meeting like times there, so I need to get those organized and department closures and stuff, so if anyone wants to send those in as well.
I, I saw your newsletter, it's fantastic.
It's really good.
Very, very, very professional, very nicely done, so we need, we do need this, it's good to have somebody, we used to have three newspaper reporters here all the time and now we have none, now we have none, so it's good that someone like you was involved in, you know, just getting the word out as to what's going on, it's, it's, it's very important, so.
Yeah, we are trying to do a video soon, like a news broadcast, I don't know when that's going to be happening. I wanted to get kids involved, like from the schools, so like people pay a little bit more attention, you know what I mean, like if their kids are in it, so that was just an idea that I had, but I don't know when we're going to start that.
Very nice.
No, I've, I've had the pleasure of knowing Eva since she was five years old and very bright, very great kid, Eva, it's fantastic. Anything we can do to help you make this happen? Any, you know, providing of information, soliciting ideas, you know, anything to, to help this keep going because your first one was a, was a home run, so, yeah, whatever we can do to help, let us know.
Very well done, are you looking to study journalism or, or print media as you move forward?
Yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah, it's solid.
One of the great ideas that Eva had was a business spotlight, so why don't you tell them about the business spotlight?
So I've made a post on Facebook on small business groups and I have, I think like eleven responses, eleven or twelve, so I'm filled up for the next year. So yeah, I wanted to highlight some.
That's great.
And I've been telling people, I'm like, you're, you're just going to be in June twenty twenty-five.
Are they still going to be in business?
And so we also are going to work with Area Fifty-Eight and as part of that small business spotlight, you know, it's important to, to support our local economy and our local businesses.
Amen.
So as part of that is with the interview, we'll do part of it in the newsletter, but then we're also going to have Eva sit down with the business owners and do a quick, you know, tour, if it's a business that can, do a tour of their location. And then not only is it a tool for us to, you know, use for economic development, but then, you know, the business owners are getting something out of it too, where they can use the tool to kind of advertise their business.
Great.
So definitely something to look forward to, we're hoping to start that in August or September.
Fantastic, wonderful, thank you for all your efforts, that's fantastic.
Don't forget us when you're running the world, Dick, remember where you started. All right.
Excellent, all right. So thank you again, that's one of, that's extraordinarily, well done, it was very nicely done, so good for work.
Keep up the good work.
All right, we'll go on to organizational chart and reporting structure.
Yes, so we've talked about this in a few meetings now. I, we took the feedback from Selectman Seelig and Selectman Pratt at the last meeting. Particularly, there was a concern with the section one point five, which, let me pull it up here, so I have this right, one point five dealt with the absence of the town administrator. So I did receive feedback from both of them on their concerns and just, you know, making sure that the full board were involved in any decisions. I met with council to see, you know, if they had a recommendation on here, so I have provided some draft language here and one point five says, "For the purpose of this policy, should the town administrator become incapacitated or unable to perform the duties of the position, the Board of Selectmen will meet as soon as feasible to appoint an acting town administrator or take any other actions relative thereto." You know, council recommended this, I, I think it addressed the concerns as much as possible. If, if you guys have alternative language that you'd like to see, we can certainly do it. This is kind of the, the best we could put forward that we felt addressed all of the concerns, but again, if there's other options, can certainly make those.
Okay, I'm happy with it.
It makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, makes sense to me now.
Okay, so we need to adopt a policy, right?
You're about to adopt a policy.
Since I suggested it, I'll make the motion that we adopt the organizational reporting and structure policy dated July twenty-third, so tonight's.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, good, all right, signature authority.
Yes, so this has been the last couple of meetings, this is typical, if a department's going to have somebody else sign off on taking their payroll in these department heads' absence, the board has historically signed off approving that, so the first one, we have a few of them here, the first is from the Board of Health and in his absence, he is requesting that Ed Bailey, our building commissioner, be the one to be able to sign off on payroll. The next one is the Highway Department, Steve Hayward, he's requesting that Kathy Garland, who is his, who is the administrative assistant in that department, be the one to do it. And then we have in the Zoning and Planning Department, Ed Bailey historically is, or is the department head, he's requesting that Bob Valerie, the health agent, be the one to do that and then the same thing for the Building Department, if he's unavailable, that Bob Valerie be the one to sign off.
Do we need to make a motion for this or just sign off on?
You've historically moved to approve it and signed it.
All right, so that please can move on.
In the forum right there. Simply for the purposes of payroll, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to start with Board of Health, so department head's Rob, Robert Valerie and he is authorizing Ed Bailey to sign the payroll, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second one is the Highway Department, Stephen Hayward is the department head and he is designating Kathleen Garland to sign payroll, so I'll move that we approve that.
Second.
Second, yeah, I'll make any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Third one is zoning and planning, so the department head's Ed Bailey, he is designating Robert Valerie to sign the payroll in his absence, so I'll move to approve that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the last one is the Building Department and the department head's Ed Bailey and he is authorizing Bob Valerie to sign payroll, so I will move that we approve that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All unanimous, okay, so we did that. Ambulance abatements? Oh, okay. All right, so I will move that we abate as per the request of the Fire Department, abatements for June twenty twenty-four, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, this is the original, so you get that back?
Uh, no, that's fine, we can leave it, as long as the board takes the vote, I think.
Okay, next up, liaison assignments?
So just, we do this annually to see, so obviously we have a Selectman Pratt who is now on the board, so deciding, you know, which assignments he will take, there's obviously some that were filled by the previous Selectmen, but it's also just a discussion to make sure that everyone still wants their existing assignments, so if you want to make any changes, so on and so forth.
Yeah, cool list.
All right. Well, Tom, what would you like to do?
So the.
Welcome to town.
The big ones, we're not in a bargaining year, but Selectman Nazarella did serve as the Highway and Cemetery and the Mixed Unit Contracts Delegate, so, you know, you can look to have Mr. Pratt do that or, again, you guys can switch up, but those, that's kind of the first big one that needs to be addressed.
So really, these are kind of an internal thing, just amongst ourselves, if there's an issue comes up with whatever these departments, that's the point person, so to speak, so if, so I'm looking at the one here, I don't see, you know.
It's at the bottom, so this is for the union contracts, so if we have any sort of negotiations or.
Oh, I see, it's blank, okay.
Yeah, it would be negotiations with the union, it would be myself and the Selectman designate and potentially council.
So what do you think, Tom, you want that?
I signed up to help, put me where you need.
All right, so we'll have Tom be.
Oh, in that case. Oh, wait a minute.
Highway Cemetery and Mixed Unit, all right, and Plymouth County Advisory Board Alternate, let's see, and so we'll start at the top, Animal Control Ops, I mean, do we really need a liaison for the animal?
So no, you don't need one for that, you know, cemetery.
Cemetery we have.
Steve Hayward is the cemetery superintendent. Emergency management, I mean, you have the police chief, I mean, the fire chief who serves as the director technically and then your police chief is default assistant director. You know, the Highway Department, you have Steve Hayward and then for bargaining, you already have, you know, Mr. Prattham. An alternate for the MBTA Advisory Board, I mean, that's, that's up to you guys, I don't know how, how often Mr. Seelig.
Um, I, I just, I just got a letter from them saying that because I was the chairman, you represent your community ex officio as a member of the MBTA Advisory Board or I can designate someone, so I guess they designated you last time.
I guess, yeah, I think you did, I think you threw me in front of that train is what I think you did.
That job and I'll be the alternate? I'm going to switch them around, I don't care.
Yeah, either way, what, what do you want to do? I would like at least, if I'm going to take it, I would like at least a backup, you know?
Yeah, all right, I mean, if you don't want it, I'll take it and you can be the alternate, you want that?
Where you're involved with a lot of the MBTA stuff right now, I think it makes sense to have you do it.
Okay.
Not that I'm pushing it on you, but just makes more sense.
So I'll be the MBTA.
I'll be the alternate, how's that?
That's perfect.
All right.
Plymouth County Advisory Board Alternate, we need somebody to do that, so that's a county, the advisory board meets, I don't know, a couple of times a year, they, they basically oversee the county government, county budget and that kind, they don't even oversee it, I think, they just make recommendations for it. They usually have a dinner. So if you're interested, Tom, you can have it.
That sounds like Tom, absolutely.
All right, let's put Tom in that one, you can be the, the alternate if you like, or you can be the original, either one, it's all right with me. And then Traffic Safety Committee, is that ongoing?
Yeah, it is ongoing, they meet periodically as issues come up. Right now, the police chief, fire chief and a few others are on it, but someone from the board being on it wouldn't be a bad idea.
Anybody interested? Yes, yes, yes.
Tom, you want to do it?
You can put me on there, it's fine.
You do it?
Sure.
Okay, good, so we got Tom on that too. The only thing is whistleblower statute, I don't know, we needed a liaison for that?
We have whistleblower would likely come through my office, if not, I could reach out to Labor Council, I don't, I don't know if you need to.
I don't think so.
We can, it's an internal policy, we'll update the policy, just put it out where to contact in case of this will.
I mean, I think that's all confidential stuff anyway and it has to be handled in a certain way.
Yep, that's, yeah.
Okay, so that covers that, right?
Yep.
Next up, so we did that, okay, appointment election workers. So I guess I can just go down the list here, right? I suppose that's what we're going to do.
Yep, you can go through the list, there were the two that we're going to remove.
Yeah, I'll just, so we're going, we're going to take off the list Frank Johnson and Michael Wallace, so I'll just go down the list and make these, this motion and somebody can second it. So election workers to be appointed, Kathleen Miller, Judith Wall, Richard Roach, Arthur Vogt, Rob, Robert Darty, Catherine Roach, Janice Hayward, Diane Phillips, William Russell, Jill McGee, Anne Hodge, Dorothy Lamero, Hope MacGyver, Linda Saviano, Pamela Aducci, Robert Niffen, Elizabeth McGann, Elizabeth Sieri and Barbara Jenkins Ramsey.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, all right, so that brings us to old business.
MBTA Action Plan, we, like I said, we got the feedback back from the state, we're making those adjustments as requested, we'll be presenting that to the Zoning and Baloney Committee on August sixth, I believe it is, and then hopefully have that back for the, for the Selectmen and then continue in that process. Morse Brothers, I think Selectmen.
Uh, yeah, so this is the update on Morse Brothers, it's kind of a complicated issue in a way, so we were made aware recently that Morse Brothers had started or was engaged in trucking, what we think is sand gravel or some such thing off of their property over the last week or so, couple of weeks, I guess. Once we were made aware of it, we discussed with council what to do and the result of that is that the board has issued a letter to Morse Brothers constituting a cease and desist, a cease and desist order and an assessment of a fine for multiple violations of the town, of Halifax Soil Removal Bylaw. The letter went out on July eighteenth, I suppose I could read the letter, I suppose maybe well, okay, so this is what we told them. It's written to Brendan McQuinn, Vice President, "This letter constitutes a cease and desist order and assessment of fine for multiple violations of the Town of Halifax Soil Removal Bylaw in regard to the recent earth removal activities," in parentheses, "the recent earth removal," and parentheses, "of Morse Brothers Inc.," in parentheses, "Morse Brothers," "as its property, at its property located at two fifty Lingan Street, Halifax, Massachusetts," in parentheses, "the property. Multiple truckloads of earth have recently been observed leaving the property. In addition, you stated in an email message to town administrator Cody Hadad dated July twelfth that approximately two thousand five hundred cubic yards of material resulting from the prior screening of sand was being removed from the property. Notwithstanding your assertion in the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-four email message, the recent earth removal was not authorized by the soil removal permit because Morse Brothers had already removed almost all of the earth authorized by the soil removal permit. By letter dated May third, twenty twenty-four, Attorney Rosenberg stated that nineteen thousand nine hundred and eight yards of sand slash earth had been removed from the property during the period of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four to April fifth, twenty twenty-four. Also, paragraph roman numeral three point one of the Soil Removal Permit states, quote, "The total amount of soil slash sand removal authorized by this permit is twenty thousand plus or minus cubic yards," end quote. The Soil Removal Bylaw defines, quote, "removal" as, as, quote, "the excavation of the earth as well as taking earth off of the property. The recent earth removal was performed without a permit pursuant to the Soil Removal Bylaw and constitutes multiple violations of the Soil Removal Bylaw." Section one forty-four dash two G of the Soil Removal Bylaw states, "The penalties shall be in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one D, and, quote, 'A person, firm or corporation violating any provisions of this chapter shall be fined twenty dollars for each offense. Each cubic yard removed shall constitute a separate offense.'" Section one forty-four dash two point A one B of the Soil Removal Bylaw states that a permit shall not be required for, quote, "excavation not in excess of one thousand cubic yards, incidental to customary agricultural maintenance and construction as allowed by law on land in agricultural use," end quote. The Board of Selectmen hereby orders Morse Brothers to cease and desist its earth removal activities at the property in violation of the Soil Removal Bylaw. the Soil Removal Bylaw. Also, the Board of Selectmen hereby assesses a fine of thirty thousand dollars, fifteen hundred cubic yards times twenty dollars against Morse Brothers for the recent removal, which was performed without a permit pursuant to the Soil Removal Bylaw and constitutes multiple violations of the Soil Removal Bylaw. Attached police fine written notice of violation pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-One D. Thank you for your attention, and that was sent by the Board of Selectmen. We've been advised by council that we should not discuss this any further in open session insofar as there is pending and likely to be additional litigation as a result of that, but as a status, that's what we've done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, town administrators update?
As far as staffing and operations, we're still recruiting for our accounting position, our conservation agent, administrative assistant in the conservation department. Our interim accountant and our assistant town accountant are working to close out the previous fiscal year, and we are hoping to get free cash certified sometime in October this year, so we don't want to go as, as long as we did last year. Finance Committee has a meeting scheduled with the school administration on August twelfth, I believe it is, to just start discussing the process that we followed last year and get a head start on the process for FY twenty-six. So, that's something to look forward to, and, you know, we're, we're working on closing out several brands that we had for the prior fiscal year, getting those in, get reimbursement, and that's pretty much it, pretty status quo. Online permitting's going great.
Oh, good.
It's been very, very minimal pickups. That's been going very well, and our implementation or working on our new financial system is also working well, getting that process. So we're, we're hoping to go live sometime early next calendar with that.
Okay.
Just a quick pub. Twentieth Annual Summer Smash softball tournament. You're gonna notice a lot of people in Halifax, the second, third, and fourth of August.
Oh.
It's the largest town softball tournament in eastern Massachusetts, so just a heads up, all your local businesses, get ready.
You're not gonna be there, are you?
I will be, we, we turn over a hundred and eight fields in forty-eight hours. It's, by the end of the weekend, I can't tie my shoes anymore, so. It's a lot of fun, but just, so the residents are aware, the school lot will be very full. We, we're kind of the crown jewel of town softball tournaments, so August second, third, and fourth.
That's been going on for at least twenty-five years.
Twenty years, this is the twentieth, officially twentieth year. They'll have a couple games Friday night, and then all day Saturday and all day Sunday.
Like Friday night, five?
Friday night, I think first games might be four-thirty, four-thirty, five o'clock. They'll play a couple before it gets too dark, and then, and then we're, all systems go all weekend, so.
As you would say, hope for good weather.
Yes, it's either gonna be the hottest day of the year, or we're gonna get seven inches of rain. It's never in between, so.
Sounds right.
Yep.
Okay, anything else for the board? So, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Our next meeting is-
August thirteenth.
August thirteenth.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, everyone.